Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting for September 22, 2014 of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening with all our members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had an August 18 work session and regular meeting and also September 8 special meeting. I had a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any addition or corrections to those minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have two modifications to tonight's agenda before Dr. Dressen reviews our full agenda. The first item is to replace our proposed levy which had a minor error in it. Can I motion to insert that?
I move that we insert the corrected document for the levy.
Second?
Under Action Item A.
Under Action Item A. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of inserting that item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second item this evening is Action Item...
E.
E is going to be moved to discussion because we did not get through those items at tonight's workshop related to the strategic guiding change plans.
And Mr. Chair, we're not walking in any change from what's proposed.
Okay. And there's no change to the guiding documents as they were inserted into the original agenda? Do we have a motion in a second?
For your clarification, was the calendar guiding document in the original packet?
Yes. Yes, there was a version of it, the original version of it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving the guiding change documents to the discussion portion of the city meetings? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dr. Dressen, can you please walk us through our agenda?
That's what I gotta do, sorry.
Ready to give awards already?
Well then, man, okay. So we're back. So we do have commendations and some recognitions to give, some of the good work happening in the school district. We'll have an opportunity for hearing from the audience. Then we will learn more about the world's best workforce. This is new legislation that is coming forward and we'll have a presentation by a team who'll be sharing that information. And then we'll again pause for another public hearing. That public hearing will only focus on the world's best workforce presentation. This is required by a state statute. So we would have two opportunities for public participation, but the second would be focused on the world's best workforce. From there, we'll move to some reports around some of our state assessment work, our tax levy that is payable in 2015. That work's being presented. We'll then give an update on our leadership and the facilities planning that is going on in our school district. We have a variety of consent agenda items related to personnel expenditures, transfer of funds. We have had minor changes in the board agenda based on our long, our big picture board agenda items based on work session in September from a consent agenda. We'll continue on through some other items. The action items, again, the big action item relates to the proposed tax levy for the upcoming year. We have some district committees and advisory councils that we use on a regular basis in approving those memberships. We have an improvement of the EAC work agreement. This is the administrative work agreement. We've got an agreement with the city. The strategic guiding change plans, those have been moved to a discussion item. And then we'll move into a variety of policies. The policy committee, we can update the board at the time of that meeting. Again, we'll take the first step on the world's best workforce, more policies, and then we'll move us into information. And that would conclude the agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Rick. We have our commendations. We do. I want to welcome Jamie Bowden up to the front of the room. Successful ACT score of 36. So tell me, when you went online and checked in, what was your first emotions when you saw that number?
I was really surprised. I didn't think that I was going to get that and...
That already happened.
I had prepared a lot for the one before, but then I just kind of took this last one as, eh, maybe I'll do better. But, got it. That was good.
That's good. So talk a little bit to, I mean, you've been a high achieving, really focused on academics. What part of learning really interests you and excites you?
I really liked, well, in school, I'm really interested in math. I took calc last year and that was one of my favorite classes I've taken at the school. And then biology, really interested in bees. I'm a beekeeper, so, yeah, that's...
That's good. And now you're in that exploratory of where to go next once we get that diploma signed at the end of the year. Talk a little bit about some of your interest areas, things you might study, schools that you might be looking at.
I hope to follow my brothers and go to Yale. I'm pretty familiar with there and it seems like a great place, although it's kind of a crap shoot getting in, so I'll do my best.
That's good. Jamie, it's an honor that you work that hard. What advice do you have? We've got students of all ages. You've kind of come through the system here. What are some highlights you see or what are some advice you have for those students still walking their way through the system and getting closer to that senior year?
Involve yourself in lots of activities and try really hard on your homework because it makes a difference.
Fantastic. Congratulations and best wishes. We've got some teachers who've done some great things over the past several months and I'm going to ask Mike Walker and Tracy Purdy and Steve to come forward. We'll learn more about this program and then we'll invite our teachers up for their recognition. Steve Butner, our Director of Technology. Steve, talk a little bit about this program.
I'm so proud of this program because it really demonstrates lifelong learning. So here we have teachers who are passionate about continuing to learn, continuing to explore, and what Randy Smalls likes to say is that challenge and keep pushing us forward to learn. And I'll have Mike and Tracy talk a little bit about the project cohort as it is now and what it might look like in the future.
Well, it was my pleasure to facilitate the cohort with my colleague Molly Schrader and focus on digital age learning with our four courses that the teachers took. And this is the second time we've run this particular cohort and just amazing work by this group. They really push themselves and have done some phenomenal things and I, looking forward, I know that many of them put in proposals at the TIES conference coming up in December and I have a feeling that many of them are going to be presenting and sharing all of their learning with the rest of the community at that time. And it's just been really neat to see them connecting online with each other and with others around the world and really growing as educators.
So we'll get a chance this year to offer this again to make sure that the teacher, other teachers who have seen the teachers come back, we had representatives from every single building, so now they've gone back and some people have started some iPad user groups, which is wonderful, and are testing out some other technology products in their classrooms, so that's really fun. So other teachers are getting excited about it, so we'll be offering it again this year, which is great. And we've had a lot of other districts be very interested in our model and so we look forward to looking at what that might look like in the future with collaboration or sharing with them, so.
And Tracy and Mike are real involved as far as getting technology integrated into the classroom and work on a daily basis with teachers along with Molly Schrader. So why don't we bring our guests up if they come forward and just kind of line right in Are you doing the...
First is Bethany Osborne and maybe I'll hand it to you, Bethany, and you can kind of pass it along and share where you teach and your feelings about the cohort.
All right. I'm at Southview, teaching French, grade six through nine, and I liked the cohort in the fact that it forced me to really dive in and try new things. And within the first four weeks of school, I've definitely tried things that I've never tried before and there have been some hiccups and some successes and that's part of what you do when you try something new. So it's been great to kind of push that into the classroom and keep up the momentum.
I'm Mary Baradron. I'm in sixth grade at Southview and probably the cohort has given me confidence to do a lot more in technology than I ever would have done without that, so.
I'm Sherri Clarett. I'm also sixth grade at Southview and I can echo what Bethany and Mary were saying and just working with each other and trying new things in the classroom. Molly gave us a speech early on and I know it was in one of our plans about living in beta, so it's sort of a, an excuse to dive in even though you can't figure everything out, you, the kids help you and it, the confidence is unbelievable, so.
I'm Leslie Stegerberg. I teach kindergarten at Highlands and my, one of my best moments was when my kindergartners were trying to problem solve and had amazing solutions to an app problem we were having and it turned out it was actually the app was having technical problems that we didn't know about at the time. And they were using words like, well, maybe we should try to go into edit mode and we should try it this way. And then they were building off each other's ideas. And so what I thought was a wash of a lesson was actually really a beautiful lesson because we were problem solving together.
Hi, I'm Britt Thies. I teach first grade at Creek Valley and this tech cohort has really rejuvenated my teaching. It's made teaching easier and it's been so much fun watching my students get excited about sharing what they've learned with other first graders and other people around the world. So it's really gotten my classroom connected beyond the classroom walls, which has just been invaluable.
I'm Angela Gagkey. I teach kindergarten at Countryside and I think a couple of big takeaways. I think it was just amazing in terms of transforming my teaching in that I am not a giver of knowledge. I'm in the process with my students and there were so many times that the kids were so engaged and excited and they're like, well, let's try this and let's do this. And I was sitting right along with them, learning and problem solving and just doing that and they were much more engaged. And now I'm actually, someone from, that's designed one of my favorite apps contacted me and said, hey, what do you think about this? Should we try this? You know, can we do this? And so I'm working with them and giving them some ideas of what might actually work in the real world, so.
My name's Kristen Powell. I teach fourth grade at Creek Valley and I think one of the big takeaways for me was how engaged students are with technology and things that, you know, I did a different way before, just the ability of the kids to kind of own it was beautiful. And also the way that they have an authentic audience that really makes it feel purposeful to them when they're creating a product or sharing something with other places, other people.
I'm Shana Powell and I'm music at Countryside. And this class coincided beautifully with my getting an iPad grant. So I have 10 iPads in my classroom now, so things I would learn about in this class, I could go back to my classroom and hit the ground running and it was fantastic. I've always thought of myself as techie, but I learned so much. I learned so much from this class, so it was really fabulous and I tell other people they should take it.
And I know some of the colleagues couldn't make it tonight, but again, on behalf of the board and the community, we thank you for your continued commitment to new learning during a very busy time and we know it's going to impact our young people for years to come. So thank you very much and we wish you congratulations. Thank you all. Thanks for stopping by tonight to share your thoughts. We're on to hearings from members of the audience. We invite members of the public to share their thoughts with the school board. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And John Fishbach has requested to stop by tonight and share a few thoughts. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Do I need the mic?
You do need a mic, John.
Do I need the microphone? Didn't know if that was a requirement or not. First of all, thank you, everybody, for my three minutes in front of the board. We had a real interesting occurrence that took place today and yesterday. A year ago, I'm talking about school year starting times, both on the clock and in the time of year. The time of year, last year, a petition went around with the idea that school would start prior to Labor Day. And the petition, I got a copy of it for you here, the petition included 426 names, people that responded opposing to the early start date. We then, yesterday, just to see what would happen, having the school already started earlier than Labor Day, we did it again. In less than 24 hours, we got more than a 70% equivalent response opposing the early start compared to the previous year. And we printed this, the ink's still wet, but the names are still coming and coming and coming. What we would like to have the board address, we understand that this coming year due to construction and other things, that the start date has been established prior to Labor Day also, but that for '17 and ongoing, there isn't a creep where that's going to continue. And there's a lot, summer is important as well. And believe me, everybody would rather have the last month of August off than the first week of June off around here. We've all had wet, cold June, et cetera. But whether it's a trip to Mount Rushmore that last week at the cabin, the parents that have limited vacation time that can tag on a couple days to that three day weekend and make it the last family outing of the summer, we'd like the board to know there's a growing number of people out there that don't favor the early start. My second topic is, the title says it, "All Pediatricians' Groups Says School Should Start No Earlier Than 8:30 a.m." I'm sure some of you have seen, I mean, there have been literally dozens and dozens of these articles in the past 30 to 60 days. I don't know what the proliferation was caused. I don't know where that came from, but it's everywhere. And I've got two friends that have schools, had kids starting school at 7:30 that have gone to 8:30. And they say the change is incredible in kids, both their general attitude during the school day, test scores, athletic performance, et cetera, et cetera, for that little bit of extra sleep. And some people will say, well, just put your kids to bed earlier. You know what? When we were all 13, trying to go to bed at 7:30 just didn't work. And so we're hoping that the school board could put the idea that this extra bit of sleep is more important than school bus schedules or revenue from school bus rental or whatever it happens to be. But we'd appreciate some way of addressing that in the future as a topic that we think is really important from a performance standpoint. I think that's about three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John. Appreciate your input.
Chair, would you like to talk to the distribution?
Next up, we have... Randy. Our presentation, World's Best Workforce. Welcome, Randy.
Sheer Meyer, Superintendent Dressen, School Board members and community. I am joined this evening by Carolyn Jackson, one of our community members that sits on our World's Best Workforce Committee, and by a student, Madison Seavy, who is in 11th grade over at Edina High School and will be jointly presenting our World's Best Workforce Report. And then we also have consulting from the back of the room, Dr. Chad Schmidt, as needed, who is our Director of Research Evaluation with Edina Public Schools. So first of all, the World's Best Workforce legislation was passed in 2013. The intent of the legislation is to identify those factors that best prepare students for college, for career, for life. And it's really about districts having a strategic plan to ensure that all students have the skills and the preparedness to succeed in life. So it looks at benchmarks like kindergarten readiness, reading well by third grade, math reading, science grade level standards being met by the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, our state assessment, plans being in place for students regarding college, career, or life, or wherever they're headed, beyond high school. It looks at graduation rates to ensure that students are graduating on time. And these components are to be laid out in this report, so we'll describe this in just a moment. As we go through this report, we want to just outline some key components of the World's Best Workforce legislation as part of this presentation. Describe how this legislation is shifting accountability from a state level to more of a community level. And then share some of the main components that we defined in our Edina World's Best Workforce Plan as presented on our website. So I'm going to turn it over to Madison to talk about a couple of elements here.
All right. So I served as the student representative on the World's Best Workforce last year and I'm intending on continuing this participation into this year. I would like to start out by saying it's such an honor to be on this committee. Every single member works so tirelessly to achieve such noble goals. These goals specifically are highlighted on this slide. So the World's Best Workforce is intending on striving towards having all students meet school readiness goals, as touched on, and it includes all third grade students achieving grade level literacy. On top of that, there are academic achievement gaps that the World's Best Workforce is intending to mitigate among racial and ethnic groups of students, between students living in poverty and students on the wealthier side, as well as students receiving special education next to those who are not. Obviously, the end goal is to have all students graduate from high school with adequate college and career preparedness. Moving on, how are we going to measure whether or not these goals are actually being met? We're going to rely on the student performance on the National Assessment of Education Progress, hopefully looking at the reduction of the academic achievement gap by student groups, looking at the student performance on the MCAs, which is the state assessment, college and career readiness as defined under the legislation, as well as other locally utilized assessment measures if applicable, so.
So as Madison said, we have several people on the committee who are working, representing across schools, across ages, across things. And one of the things about that is that this legislation turns the accountability to schools on the World's Best Workforce to the local community. So we have, like I said, parents, we have teachers, we have a student, we have administrators, and we're adding people from the University of Minnesota. We have the Executive Director of College Readiness and we have the Director of Advising and Counseling from Normanville Community College on, they're going to be joining our committee. So we have people looking at where we are now and where we want to go. And it's supported by, the Department of Education is giving guidance, but it's really up to us to create it and go forward. So some of the things that we're doing is we're going to have clearly defined district and school site goals for the benchmarks for instruction and student achievement on all student subgroups. What we've done is, this was formerly the Student Achievement Committee, so we're taking elements that already exist in the district and aligning them with the state goals. So some of the resources we have that we're going to be using are the Q Comp Plan, where the alternative delivery of specialized instructional services, the school improvement plans, the integration plan, the educator effectiveness plan, the district integration plan, the district staff development plan, and continuous improvement monitoring plan. So we're looking at performance pay and teacher evaluations. We're looking at using resources that we've got to improve reading and math aligning with this, the school improvement by site, and also with special ed. So these are things that are already in place that we're aligning with the state standards. The school board will advise, will establish an advisory committee, and that's the World's Best Workforce Committee, to ensure community engagement in the development and review of the plan, and we began that earlier this month. We reflect the diversity of the district and its school sites and make recommendations to the school board regarding rigorous academic standards, student achievement goals, and In order to make sure that we're doing this, there are some accountability elements. One is to publish a report annually on the district plan's results, and I believe that will be published through our website, right, Randy? And the school board will hold an annual public meeting, while the first one tonight, periodically survey constituencies about the connection to schools and level of satisfaction, and Chad will be handling that. And the school board will submit then an electronic summary of the report to the commissioner. So this is very different. It's going to be a very short document that will go to MDE. So instead of the school, the Department of Education going through, well, as Edina meeting its goals and where we're at, that's up to us, the community members, and to the school board to look and see how are the Edina schools doing with these external measurements of student achievement. And it's a very different change. Rather than having the state look down on us, we're going to be in charge of our own results. And I think, I'm really excited about that because it brings it, accountability really close to home, to the people who it affects the most. And that's what I'm most excited about on this part of the plan. So I think that's it. And then you've got, are you pulling up the website?
So I'll do a brief tour. Might be very brief.
It was there a minute ago, I saw it.
I'll just back up here a second. So what we have done is, the state has granted us great flexibility in the format of the report. So we have chosen a website as a way to demonstrate how we have these components of the legislation in place in our district. So the way the website works, it is the www.edinaschools.org, address forward slash, and then just W B W F. Right now, it's not live on our website. It's found through this link, but it will be under the Academics tab regarding World's Best Workforce information. So we'll be placing that after this evening. So the way the site works is the landing page refers to the legislation and then the left-hand margin has some guiding pages that go into more depth with some of the planned components. I won't go through all of these, but I'll just kind of highlight a few of these with you. So first of all, the landing page under District and School Achievement would talk about our district goals as a system, and then underneath that, we would have specific goals for each of the schools across the district. I'm going to close that one and add, under Student Progress and Growth, we would have list our assessment calendar, when these assessments are given in the school. Our assessment plans involve the type of assessments that we give throughout the year, which really define how we know students are on track or how students are growing from year to year, et cetera. I'm going to ask if Chad will speak to this link around data results, but I'm going to click on it.
Yes, so we put a couple of different links here. The one that I want to point you to is, Randy, I'll click on it in a second, it'll point users or website visitors to the Minnesota Department of Education Report Card website. And this link takes them directly to the Edina Schools information on that page, so we've been able to preset that. So we'll let this load here for just a second, but on one half of the screen, we'll see measures in math and on the other half of the screen, we'll see measures in reading. One of the things about this site that we like is it's highly user friendly and people can go in and find, personalize the information and find what they want to find from it. So you could look up a specific school, you could look up a specific grade level, you could look at different content areas. All of that is available on this website. So we want to direct people to something that's existing and in the public domain and available for everyone to use. Randy, if we go back to that site, then on here, we've also got some information that I'll be presenting later in my state assessment update. And so it's links to some of the information that the board will see here in just a few minutes.
We also have links to academic standards as published by MDE and then a variety of committees that we have established as a school district that help continue to move the work forward, and it also lists the members of those various committees, both school district members, community members, students, et cetera. We also have tools that we use for improving instruction, curriculum, and student achievement. They include our new teacher evaluation system, which we're implementing this year for the first time. Our principal... Our principal evaluation system, our curriculum review cycle, so folks can see when different curricular areas are up for review, and they see that there's a cycle to that. And then we have resources around best practices and other resources that we tap into when we're trying to determine what interventions do we put in place in schools. We're looking for evidence-based interventions, and so these are some resources that we look at when making those decisions. Programming to improve student achievement, there are various programs that we have in place, and just organizing these links in one place, early intervention, our EL program, our GT program. So each of these links go to some of those programs that, there's information already on the website, but it's coordinated in a way that articulates how this fits the legislation. Our e-learning squared, we heard from our tech cohort group how technology integration has changed their experience, has empowered them, has grown the passion that they already have, and that technology integration is such a great lever for helping personalize learning throughout the district. And then lastly, we have a link for our community satisfaction. So when we do surveys of the community regarding satisfaction, we'll be able to place those results here on the World's Best Workforce site in addition to other locations. So again, the intent of the site is to provide the information required by the legislation so folks can see what the school district is doing that meets the legislation, and if they have questions, this is a summary place to go. And so that is the format that we decided to use to organize it. Again, as Carolyn said, there will be a summary that will be created via a template that MDE has shared with us, and we will be submitting a summary of this site to MDE, and we'll also post that summary on the site when that's complete, and that will be due in October. At this time, we would like to turn it over to the school board to see if there are any questions.
So this isn't so much a change of if I were a parent.
Now I have my microphone on, new system. So as a parent or a student in the school, I'm not going to see huge differences in the way we're delivering services. This is more a way of the district organizing information about what we already do so that we can look at it and make sure that we're meeting state mandated goals. Would that be correct?
That would be correct, Kathy. This is about just how we report what we do, so MDE has that format.
Thank you.
I think it was an effort on MDE's part to coordinate all of their various reports and put it under one umbrella, and it aligns very nicely with our strategic work of next generation.
It's a great resource for parents. It's just really one-stop shop to really, if you're curious about how things or how your school's doing, it's a great place to go.
Just curious on some history, is this something else other states are doing? Is there a federal push towards this? Or is that really not the case? I'm just, if you don't know, that's fine too.
I won't make one up, but definitely Minnesota, obviously, this is a big push in Minnesota. I think many states are trying to figure out what is our bar, what are our benchmarks to make sure our kids leave our public educational system being prepared for college, career, and life. So whether it looks exactly like this, many states are pushing to raise the bar and make sure that all students are best prepared for their future.
And if I can add, a lot of the resources that are on that last thing are national resources, so research that's done in other states we're drawing from, and you can refer to what other people are doing through that way.
And I commend you on the website. It may not be live for everyone in the community yet, but certainly for those of us who have it on our board book, and we can pull it up and click on all those, that's just a wealth of information that is available there, and it was very easy to navigate, so I commend you on that.
I just want to thank Madison and Carolyn, Randy, and your team for all the work you put on, put into this program, and echo Kathy with the clarity of the information and the ability to look at it from so many different points of view. It's really valuable.
Thank you, and I'd like to just publicly thank our presenters and definitely our committee for all their thinking and questions and debate and suggestions and just overall hard work, and really our communication department who worked very hard to help us organize the information in a way that is easy to find answers to questions and do some inquiry as well. Any others? Thank you. Great work. Thank you very much. Not everybody gets a hand for showing up.
We dated there, we just had fun with this.
Next up, does that conclude the public hearing?
We would have to officially call for a public hearing.
Any questions from the public? Thank you all. State assessment report? Thanks, Susan. It's a tough one.
Chad Schmidt, our Director of Research and Evaluation, comes, stops by regularly to update the board on just the data world that we live in, and it plays a key role in helping us not only take a look at the data, but how we can use the data to help instruction. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Dresson and the Edina community. I'm here to give you an update on the state assessment results from the 2013-14 school year. And you can see from this slide, we're going to cover a broad range of results, including, so not only just MCAs, but also ACT and AP results, Advanced Placement results. So I'm going to get started with that. The slides are going to go in a similar pattern, and so we're going to look at reading first, math second, and then science third, and then we'll jump into ACT and AP. So what I see here is elementary level, middle school level, and high school level results trending over a three-year period of time, and what we see is a pretty flat level of performance from 2012-13 to 2013-14. I want to point out the color coding on the screen is indicative of same tests relative to same standards. So we can compare the two darker colored, the 2012-13 and 2013-14 results, but we shouldn't look back to 2011-12 and say, wow, results really dipped from 11-12 to 12-13. It's a new set of standards with a new assessment, so the 12-13 year really served as a new set of baseline data for us. And so again, we see results are pretty flat in the last year. When I look at it by grade level, I can see that in just about every grade level, we're approximately, so here's how this works. The black bar on the right-hand side is Minnesota statewide averages. The green bar is Edina's 13-14 averages, and the yellow bar is Edina's 12-13 averages. So when we compare yellow to green, you see some grade levels where there was a slight dip from 12-13 to 13-14. You see some grade levels where there was a slight increase. All in the, at the end of the day, that averages out to being a pretty flat, a flat result from, a flat change from year one to year two. And consistently, Edina students are about 20 points or so above the statewide average in terms of being grade-level proficient in reading, as measured by the reading test. This one shows our gap between student groups, and so we look at our performance of a variety of student groups, and this is some that we've been tracking over time. And what I see on this slide is, when I compare the highest-performing student groups to the lowest-performing student groups, we see a pretty consistent space of about 30 to 35 points. And so that's a concern that we have, that's something that we've been talking about and working on, and it is our effort that this gap shouldn't be there, and we're making efforts to say, how do we close this for each of our students? Okay, so that was reading performance. I'm going to switch over to math. The one thing that's different here is you can see there's only one blue square at the high school level. That's because this is the first year of a new assessment for them. So that 78.9% is really just the start of a new baseline, and we'll wait to see what happens next year. Similar to what happened in reading, it's a pretty flat level of performance from 12-13 to the 13-14 school year, both at the elementary and the middle school levels. By grade level, again, we see some grade levels where there was a slight decrease, other grade levels where there was a slight increase, and consistently about 20 or so points above the statewide average. If you're curious, you'll see no yellow bar on the grade 11 one, and that's because, again, the 13-14 is a new test and the start of a new set of baseline data. The trend in math looks very similar to the trend in reading, in that there's about a 35 or 40-point gap between our highest-performing student groups and our lowest-performing student groups. So that's something that's consistent across reading measures, across math measures, and also across science measures. Looking at science performance, this is one place where we saw fairly sizable increases from 2012-13 to 2013-14, and that's at the middle school level in grade eight. We jumped from, I think, 54% up to 60% proficient. And at the high school level, we jumped from 74% proficient to almost 79% proficient. So both nice gains and increases, due in part to some very focused work that those teachers and staff were doing relative to their content, what they're teaching, alignment with the state standards and the measurement of the MCAs. And at the high school level, you can see 25 points above the state average. At the middle school, only 15 points above the state average, and that's pretty similar to where it's at at the elementary level as well. All right? So I didn't include a picture of the gap here in science, but I can confirm for you, it looks very much the same as it does in math and reading. All right, I'm going to let that be the MCA results. Through the Federal No Child Left Behind Accountability System, the MCA results are used to calculate something called adequate yearly progress. And what you see here are a bunch of Y's, which are to say that we met the targets in every one of our categories. So meeting proficiency in reading, meeting proficiency in math, participation rates in both reading and math, and then attendance or graduation rates. And the N's are just to say that you have, we have to have at least that many students in the group or in the cell to be counted. So the American Indian row, you see that our student count falls below that 20 or that 40, so that's why those are blank. And again, in the graduation rates for our Hispanic student group and our limited English student group, that's true as well. There is one part of Minnesota's waiver to No Child Left Behind called the Minnesota, the Multiple Measurement Rating System, and I don't have a slide here in the public presentation for that, just because we're waiting on results from MDE. That will come out October 1st, so about one week ahead of when those results will come out, and I'll report those back to the board when we get them. So I'm going to move on away from Minnesota-specific tests and look at some national-level tests. So this is a slide of our ACT composite averages, and the red bar is the US average over time, basically a 10-year trend. The blue line is Minnesota state average over time, and the green line at the top is the Edina High School's average. So you can see our average composite score is 26.3. That's a full three scores above the statewide average. And the other thing I want to point out is that I gave just a couple of samples of how many students take the test. Back in '05-'06, we had 446 students taking the test. This last year, we had almost 600 students taking the test. So even though there's about a third as many students, additional students taking the test, the composite scores have remained about the same, and about the same gap over the statewide averages.
So that 595 is out of how many eligible students? Do you know?
So you know what?
Ballpark.
Yeah, ballpark of 650. So it's about 85% or so of our graduating senior class.
So these are just the scores of seniors, not juniors, who are also taking the test?
Thank you, Kathy. Good question, and that's true, yes. These are our graduating seniors in the class of 2013-14.
So Chad, oh, sorry, for our students who are taking the test more than one time, it's reflecting the test they choose to report or the final test?
Good question again. This is, it's the highest score. So ACT will track on that highest score. That's right. And in a minute, I'm going to link you to what's going to happen this year in 2013, or 2014-15, sorry. Well, we're going to be administering the ACT to every one of our juniors, so I'm going to let that come back in in just a second.
Chad, can you talk, the next slide is appropriate as well. Is ACT becoming more accepted around the country as far as an increased trend in the number of students taking? Or is it more of a, Midwest is the wrong term, but you know, it is not favored by all states?
That's true, Randy. It still is not favored by all states and all colleges and universities. So particularly towards the coasts, the SAT is the favored college entrance exam, but I know that universities can do some linking between an ACT score and an SAT score and do some connection points that way. So many of our students who will pursue college on either coast, either the east coast or the west coast, will probably end up taking both exams, and so that's not a totally uncommon experience. I think we had about 150 students take the SAT exam, if I remember right, if I remember the score report I saw.
So I'm just curious, from a Nash, from the US perspective, where really should that red bar be? It's really distorted, is it not, because of the population who's taking the test?
So not every student takes the test, right? So if this were, if this were an examination administered to every student, the red bar would probably be in a little different place, just as much as the blue bar and the green bar might be in a little different place. But at the end of the day, when we have 85% of our students taking the test, I think it's a pretty fair representation of students. And the other thing I can comment on is I believe the blue bar is only reported for states that have at least 50% of students who take the test across the state. So the blue and the red are indicative of that as well, that they're looking for large groups of participation.
Okay. Yeah, and what I was referring to more is from the US basis because...
Oh, because some students are taking the SAT and not taking the SAT. Sorry.
I think you're self-selecting in some ways.
I got it, yes, and that's true too.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Advanced Placement exams, so I've got a five-year trend here, and the thing you see on both the number of exams taken and the number of students sitting for exams is it's increased considerably in the last five years. So this is, one of the reasons we've got some space concerns around administering it is, right now, students have come to the community center mostly to take the tests. We've done a little bit of work with Southview and some work with the high school last year, but going from basically 2,100 students to over 2,500 students, sorry, 2,100 tests to over 2,500 tests, that is a lot of both time and space concerns in terms of getting students through that, and up from 900, almost 1,000 students to over 1,200 students taking exams. Now, the good thing is, the results basically haven't changed. And so while we've got more students taking more tests, we still have approximately 85% of tests with a score of three or higher, and almost 60% of tests with a score of four or higher. And so traditionally, that language is that colleges, a college acceptable score is a score of three or higher. Some universities have shifted that bar up to a score of four or higher, so I wanted to report both of those for you. So more students taking more tests with very similar rates of performance. All right, so then my summary of what you've seen tonight, so a couple of spots here. Overall strong performance, about 20 or so points above the Minnesota average at really any given grade level, and for the various content areas, what I called flat growth from 12-13 to 13-14, that's true for most subjects and grade levels, and it matches the pattern at the state level. Across the state of Minnesota, we saw, again, very flat levels of growth. Middle school and high school science proficiency were increased by about 5%. That's one of the spots where we saw some growth, some sizable growth. The ACT composite score was a 26.3, again, a little over three points higher than the Minnesota average. 1,200 students taking almost 2,500 AP exams with scores, 84% of scores three or higher, and 58% of scores four or higher. The achievement gap has been persistent over time. It's about 40% from highest to lowest, from our highest-performing student groups to our lowest-performing student groups. No Child Left Behind regulations, we met AYP in all areas for all of our student groups, and the Minnesota, sorry, Multiple Measurement Rating System is expected to be released next week, so we'll have results for that. And finally, a note about what's coming. So in 2014-15, Minnesota Department of Education has said that the MCAs will only be administered online. So in the past few years, we have selected to administer that test in a paper pencil format where we can. It allows for a little ease of administration. We can basically do it over a two-day window, and testing is tight within that window. With this online, it allows us some flexibility, but it also provides some challenges in that we've got to have computer lab space, and basically every student has to run through those computer labs for that testing. So we've got some challenges that Steve Butner and principals are working with in terms of scheduling that. And finally, a new part of legislation in Minnesota is that the ACT will be administered to all 11th graders across the state on April 28th at no cost. So this is one where Edina High School, we're building a plan for what that day is going to look like for all of our students, and we've got some options in place, but we haven't necessarily finalized each, the option. But what we do know is it will be administered on April 28th again to all 11th graders. And so with that, I'm going to take your questions.
The ACTs that are offered on April 28th, can students use those for college app?
Great question, Randy. Yes, they are college reportable scores, and there are, I think, a handful of states, four or five right now, that are doing statewide ACT testing. And so ACT has been down this road with a few other states, and so they've brought that history and information to Minnesota, and so yes, this is a college reportable score.
Or not?
Or not. So students will have the option, just like any other ACT that they take... So students will have the option, just like any other ACT that they take, they'll have the option to say, I want these scores reported to colleges X, Y, and Z, or not reported.
And so are school districts on the Department of Education working so that the ACT that all juniors would take in the state of Minnesota would replace some of the other standardized tests that high schoolers take since the ACT tests you over all the different subject areas?
That's a great question, Kathy. The way the legislation is written right now, the assessments, the accountability assessments have to do two things. One, they have to measure Minnesota's academic standards. And two, they have to be linked to college and career readiness measures. So there is no college and career readiness measure like the ACT that would also measure Minnesota's academic standards. So the short answer is no. Students will be, students in 10th grade will take the MCA reading test, students in 11th grade will take the MCA math test, students after they complete a biology course will take the MCA science test. That's typically 11th grade in Edina. And then 11th graders will also be taking this ACT. So it will be a busy spring season, and then you add on AP testing coming shortly after this April 28th ACT testing date. And that's part of the schedule that we're working on and trying to finalize at the high school.
I have a question about the MCAs. With the requirement that they all be administered online, does it need to be a hardwired online connection, or can a laptop wireless connection suffice?
Good question. So it can be done on wireless. There is, and so with DMTS, with Steve's department, we've worked very hard around reliability of that wireless network. But we wouldn't want to put a student in a situation where they're partway through the test and something happens to it. So it would be a little more of a guarantee to be on a wired setting than to be on a wireless setting. But yes, we have that option to explore.
Thanks.
Anything to learn from our, from our jump in science that we could use in math or reading?
Yeah, I think, and so this is some of the work that Randy might comment on, but the science teachers have been very focused about unpacking their standards. So what are the academic standards that are expected in that course or in that sequence? And then prioritizing them and unpacking them. So what does that mean from a student, a student perspective? And what kinds of evidence do we need to see that students are mastering those standards? And so it's work that has been happening in math, particularly at the elementary level. And it's work that's going to be, that's ongoing this year in the reading level. And I'm going to turn to my colleague to see if there's anything he wants to add to that. But that's the work that the science teachers were engaged in in the last couple of years. And I think that's some of the results that we're seeing here today.
We actually got a report from Jim Wood at MDE that listed each of the science standards and whether Edina was above or below the state average on a specific standard. And then we looked at what we were teaching, we looked at our curriculum through middle school, and found that there were many places where we really weren't focusing on some of the standards and were spending too much time on maybe other areas. And so it was really looking at some of the alignment. And I think it's stronger than it has been before. We still have a lot of work to do, but it's progress in the right direction.
Thank you. Additional questions? Well done, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
On the tax levy. Margot.
Hey, Margot.
I've been looking forward to the tax levy. It's that time of year again, and I'll be back in December to talk about it. So as far as the process goes, this is a proposed tax levy. And we will have an opportunity to revisit it again in December. In July and August, we submit a lot of data to the state. They process it, and we actually received all the formulas, all the limitation information within the last 10 days. Finance and Facilities Committee reviewed it and took a look at it on the 16th. And administratively and with Finance and Facilities, we made a considerable change to the original limitation, which was 12.9% increase, and we've lowered that to just under 7.5%, 7.49% by spreading abatements over a couple of years and also revisiting our alternative facilities levy, which I'll explain more in a few minutes. A recommendation tonight, which is typical part of the process for the proposed levy, is to approve the maximum. What that does is allow the greatest flexibility for the board to be able to revisit the levy as more information becomes available between September and December. We also want to be sensitive at this time, though, when we are approving the maximum, that we have worked as much, as much as possible at the information we have right now, which we have, we have done in the last 10 days, between Finance and Facilities Committee and myself. Because in between September and December, the Truth and Taxation notices are sent out to property tax owners in November. So we want to try, have, try to reflect the most accurate picture that, with the information that we know about at the time. What does, is possible to occur, because there is such a short timeframe at this time, is that the State Department is continuing to review information between now and September 30th, the legal timeline that they have to continue to keep the formulas and website open. And because our board meeting is early, and this is typical, I know boards that were approving it last week, there can be changes as they continue to work with all districts and state formulas. So areas that the state is saying they still have to review and double-check, there's some integration, funding changes legislatively and to double-check some of that, current technical levy, and possibly some TIF, tax increment financing adjustments. I'm not anticipating any major changes. The only area of question I might have would be tax increment financing. But I will keep everybody apprised of any potential changes. But as I know of it today, all our district data is in and correct, and we've double-checked it, and we've also made the revisions recommended to Finance and Facilities Committee. So what is included in our district levy certification? Most notably, and what everybody thinks of it, are the voter-approved referendums, whether they're operating tech levy or capital, tech referendums or bond referendums. But there's other levies set by state formula. For example, we have a funding source for capital funds that is based on students and square footage. The state, in their formulas, determines how much is paid by local property taxes and how much is paid by the state. And that can legislatively change. Maybe it stays the same many years in a row, and then they'll change the formula a little bit, they did a couple of years ago. So things like that can change. Levis authorized by the state based on local need. A good example of that is our health and safety revenues, even our alternative facilities, where we submit to the state a need based on that type of funding and receive approval. And we have, there's a specific process for that. And then the process for us all, with our taxpayers, to inform that of the, to, of that need and the levy is, at the December meeting, we have an opportunity for the public to give feedback called Truth in Taxation, so that we share all of the components of our tax levy at that meeting. And which we are tonight too, but it's a requirement at the December meeting. So factors contributing to this year's levy change, most significantly, were the abatement changes. After the adjustment where we'll take the total non-abatements over a two-year period instead of the one-year period, it's still a percent and a half increase on the abatements. Variety of legislative formula changes, just under a percent, which would be some adjustments based on the 2013 legislative session for referendum and equity revenues, with the major changes in the funding formula last year. By the time the levy formulas came out, the state was making some assumptions in how that would impact overall statewide and all of us. So there's some adjustments there. And certainly our local enrollment, kindergarten additions in terms of leases, inflationary increases, and then funding more of the alternative facilities projects through the annual levy versus bonds. And this is also an area we made an adjustment to have more of the funding go back towards the bonds, but still are keeping an increased dollar amount through annual levy for a variety, a couple of reasons. One, that it helps when we look forward to create some stability, all other things equal in the levy ongoing, which is a priority. It's balancing the needs of the annual or pay-as-you-go or on-long-term, 20- to 30-year district finances in terms of bonds and taxes and looking. And so I think it's an appropriate recommendation, long-term and short-term. And also being cognizant overall in all the levies of our taxpayer needs and trying to balance all of those needs as we bring a recommendation forward. Areas of reduction, there were some adjustments from prior years, where the levy might have been a little higher. We have a negative adjustment. There's also the debt excess adjustment. The levy automatically requires for debt, which is our, the equivalent of our principal and interest payment, similar to a personal mortgage, its payment for our buildings. They require us to levy 105%, extra 5%, so that we never ever default on our bonds. But then there's a systematic formula in place to make sure that we just don't accrue fund balance, you know, after two, three, five, 10 years. And so we did have a reduction in that area this year. Also, just to note, our taxes are based on the 2013 market value and tax capacity data, which had increased in values for that period of time. Thought we'd try to compare, because the city just came out last week with information on their tax levy moving forward. Theirs is on a calendar year, and ours is on a fiscal year. But it's all in the same tax year for taxpayers, which would be coming up in 2015. So you can see there's some similarities and differences between the city of Edina and our school district. And the difference would be that there are components of this, or areas of the city of Edina which are not in the Edina Public School District. And so like, again, you can see some similarities and differences. The major difference would be the 2015 tax capacity. You see a 10.5% increase for the Edina Public Schools and a 14% increase in the city of Edina. This is where property outside of the school district boundaries is coming off tax increment financing. And overall, will help the community members within the city of Edina when they look at their tax statements and see county, city, and school district. That's going to be favorable to them, because as you see in any case here, whether it's under the school district or the city, when you see average home value increases of between 8% for the school district and 10% for the city of Edina, but the market, or the tax capacity value is increasing 10.5% or 14%, you see a difference there between what's happening to the average homeowner and what's happening overall in our tax base. That difference mean there's growth, there's more homes, or there's more business, or there's more tax entities paying for those taxes. So it's distributed amongst a larger base, which is helpful to the overall community. Average home values with, from 2014 and 2015. And if the property values remain the same for both years, versus, so no increase when you receive your personal tax statement in the, your property value of your home or your business, then the district's recommended increase of 7.49% would actually show about a 2% decrease in the property taxes. And I'm understanding, in working with the city, that their 8.4% recommended increase, all other things equal, with no increase in market value, would result in a 3% decrease. And that's where the, that what I just talked about, the difference between what home values are going up and the increased tax capacity from the previous year, how you can see that reflected. But we do know that individual home values will go up, because the data is showing that on average for in our school district, they're going up 8%. Now, I would just like to note that overall, the values, that the market values in the school district property still are below the '09 and '10 values. So the homes and properties are adjusting to the change in the market, which is good. That's, you know, it shows that the economy is turning around, because we saw several years of a decline there, and now we're going to see some market adjusting coming back. But we still aren't quite back to that '09 and that 2010 level, so.
Margot, quick on this slide, just because it may not be, oh, sorry. On this slide, since it's not obvious to probably the average viewer, the home value is the same in terms of the, showing the increases there, the 400 to 438, eight on both city and EPS. So why the difference of the 8% versus the 10%? Does that have to do with the larger tax base versus the borders of EPS?
Yes. Yeah, it's a larger tax base. It's just the information I had at the time. So yeah, it's the larger tax base, is my, but I could clarify that with the city.
Okay, because it just...
I understand what you're saying.
It's like, why is 18, why is 10?
No, I understand.
It might be how it's, the information may be drawn from different segments of the year. We're looking at July, June 31st to July 1st, they're looking at a calendar year, is my guess.
That very well could be.
Thanks, Randy.
I could follow up with them. Yeah, typically also, we'll have more hardcoded information in December, but because of the increase, I gathered more information from Hennepin County and the city, as much as I could get now in September, which is really hard, because everybody's doing the same thing right now. And it takes October for the county to process it, and we have more information in November. But because of the increase, I want to be able to give you some comparison information and what was going on, and also tax impact information, which normally we don't do at this time of year. But I'll make a note so that I follow up and double-check that for the December Truth in Taxation. So the annual estimated tax impact of the proposed levy certification here tonight, if you can see in this chart on the market value on the left-hand side, if there's no change in a property's value, the estimated annual change in some properties, then you would see actually a decrease in that case in other properties, once they get above a certain point, based on the state's tax law and how they tax properties, once you're above, I believe it's a half a million property is taxed at a little bit higher rate. Then again, then in column three, if the market value increases with the average increase of 8%, and you combine that market value adjustment, then the estimated annual tax increase in our cases are reflected there with the school, and this is just a school district. It does not include the city or county, since we wouldn't have that information yet at this time.
So that 8% increase calculation, somebody looking at this presentation couldn't assume that that is the same amount of dollars in your, in your third column there as the city would be?
No, no.
Thanks.
Because that would be calculated differently. And also, if there's any county taxes within that same tax statement, that is all.
I'm just looking at, you know, if they looked at the slide before and then looked at the next one, could they make that assumption? But it's, it's equitable.
This is only the school district. And the process now, the city's submitting their information to the county. We, as, by law, have to submit it by September 30th. And then the county takes and processes all of that in the, throughout October, and that's how we receive our November Truth in Taxation statements, where then as taxpayers, we can see it all combined together. Any questions? Finance and Facilities members, we had a lengthy discussion in terms of are the adjustments being made and the recommendation we brought forward, and anything I missed?
We did have a lengthy discussion in committee about this, in terms of the ramifications of the increase being larger than it's been in the past, as well as, you know, reflecting as a group on this change with the city and the changes in increased property values, that they're, you know, just, just anticipating the reaction of the average taxpayer when they get their statement and their estimated statement in November, as Margot alluded to.
And the bulk of the change here, I mean, the biggest difference from prior years is the alt-facilities money.
Right.
Which is just, as a practical matter, a realization that if we're going to spend $10 million a year on, you know, catching up on deferred maintenance, that we've got to pay for it. Right?
And there was a great deal of agreement, this was the responsible way to do it, the way that had the least impact on the taxpayer and that it's money very well spent. So there was strong committee support. More to be reported.
And our discussion centered short-term and long-term, and yes, what was the... And our discussion centered short-term and long-term, and yes, what was the, how did we balance responsibly that, all of those considerations, taxpayer, district, facility, all of that into a recommendation we could bring forward?
And clear the discussion of funds versus levies, and how to best personalize the available sources around it.
Yeah, I think, I think the key thing was, you know, if you look at this just as your personal finances, it's how much do you keep riding on in debt versus how much do we, you know, pay as we go through the process, so that we don't end up with a larger amount of debt later on, that then would not be very stable for the taxpayer. So this seemed like a more, as you put it, responsible way to manage the funds going forward.
Any other questions?
Explanations.
That's on the agenda later, and we'll ask for approval then.
Next up, Dr. Dresden is going to provide us a leadership and facilities update.
Good evening, everybody. Here we go, just that, kind of that monthly check-in on how we are moving forward with our work as it relates to our strategic work. I will not hit on all of these items, because some of them are being addressed, the personalized learning for all, for example. I think this whole world's best workforce does a nice job stepping into that. The All-for-All Initiative, we saw that gap coming into play, and we're concerned about that academic gap, that All-for-All Initiative, how all of us supporting all learners. I think we'll be coming back to the board in October with a report of some of our action plans around that. Our facilities study, you can learn a little bit more about under our coherent programming. Please know that all of these studies that we continue to advance, the, actually, the implementation team for the birth through grade five, they meet for the first time tomorrow. And our partnerships, we continue to seek new partnerships as we continue to grow our efforts around All-for-All. Just a couple hiring updates. Our district controller, Scott Brown, will be coming on board the first part of October. Also, Jen Carter, who was a teacher in our World Language Department, moved into the dean position. Also, I'm guessing at the report time, we may hear something from the board about a very dynamic visit to the West Side School District, which is in the Omaha community, was in our, this school district, September 17th to the 19th, and had some great engaged discussions facilitated by Dr. Jim Ricaba on how we can advance our work and leadership as school boards. Very exciting times. And later this month, the 21st Century Benchmark Consortium is joining our district. These are superintendents, assistant superintendents, high school principals, taking a look at our work, learning from our work, and us learning from their input. Again, we continue to champion and bring, bring hope and happiness into our future, getting deeper into the research around this and trying to use it in a regular setting at the school sites, as a district, learning more about the power this can have for the success of our learners. I'm going to shift our work discussion over to facilities and how we use the space that we have and planning forward with the space. Susan Brott, who's our Director of Communications, has been doing an amazing job of working with our very committed task force members over the past several Tuesdays, with two more to go, and I asked Susan to give us an update on this.
Thank you. As Dr. Dresden said, we've had so far, just going to give you a brief update for you and the public, a lot of you sit around the board table, have actually been present at these meetings, but we wanted to make sure the public was aware of how the task force is going. Recall that we did a call for applicants back in July, and seeking a wide representation of people to serve on this. So again, the purpose is to analyze all of the data and consider some options, and we really bring that community representative voice into the room as we look ahead to what our facility needs are, both short and long-term. We're focusing a lot on the short right now, but we know that there's some questions coming up about long-term facility needs. We obviously, if you've heard numerous times before, have aging facilities, and we need to figure out what our long-term plans are as well. And we look at prioritizing those options for administration, that we could bring a good recommendation to you as well. But as we know, those meetings have been open to the public, and several of you have attended those meetings as well. So as we did, as I said, we did a call for applications back in July, and, you know, initially, we were worried about how many people might hear it, but we got an overwhelming response, more people than spots that we had to fill. We wanted to make sure that we had good representation, so we do have students and we have parents, representatives from every school in the district, as well as our early childhood programs. We have some staff members on there, we have some community stakeholders representing different interests, and then we have a lot of just residents at large as well. So there's 25 people total, as you can see the names there, it's been a really dynamic group, and I would say from the very beginning, they have not been shy. So it's been very good. So just, we kind of go through this every time, and sort of roles and responsibilities, so that we understand what it is, the role of the task force itself. We started, actually, before we went to the task force, as you recall, we went to get some data for ourselves as administration and board, so we looked at what kind of financing options we might have as we looked to the future of potential referendum in 2015. We did a facilities assessment with our architects. We've done a community survey with, back in May and June, that we presented on earlier, Dr. Bill Morris presented on, just sort of saying, where is the community sitting at this point in time with a potential referendum? And then obviously, we had a demographic study as well, just kind of talking about what our enrollment will look like in the next five to 10 years. The task force role at this point is to support us as administration and to support the board in terms of analyzing what the needs and priorities are, and then we would, again, use those recommendations in providing a recommendation to the board. So this has kind of been our roadmap, it's been a tight timeline, six weeks, so we've had four meetings so far. And the first meeting, we really did want to set the stage, and as we've been trying to say a lot with our Next Generation of Edina Public Schools strategic plan, we've been trying to talk a lot about how learning needs to drive a lot of our resources, or to drive a lot of our decisions. And so, resources like space and time and funds should really be variable to what is best for learning. So we spent the first meeting, kind of bringing everyone up to speed on what our, what our strategic plan is, focusing a lot on personalized learning and the three outcomes that Dr. Dresden just went through. The next meeting was a lot, a very large data dump. We threw a lot of information at them about what kind of, what are our current facilities like, what was the survey, what was all that information that we had previously mentioned, and maybe what are some of the little pockets of innovative spaces that we have around the district. We then spent the third meeting looking at a lot of those spaces and really trying to start processing them. So we've been processing and valuing those. Where were their values at first with all the information they had? Then we came back last week, and we started really kind of drilling down to get some information on what, where recommendations might be going with them. So again, they're not, you know, they're not coming back with a recommendation for a referendum question, they're helping us prioritize what our needs are. So tomorrow night, we'll be meeting number five, and we'll be further refining those options with, hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll be having some consensus to bring forward. At this point, I just wanted to update that at this point, we seem to be having some pretty good consensus around some basic improvement needs that we need at the K-12 program level to include, we need some basic classroom updates, we need some, and also some more improved and flexible learning spaces. We have a very rigid older model of our schools, and so we're looking for some more improvements there to include a lot of media center renovations and things for common collaboration spaces. Also, in that K-12 general plan, we're looking at some safety and security updates that we know that we need to do, some specialized learning spaces, whether it's for art, music, gym, special ed, some other specialized learning spaces, and then continuing that ongoing maintenance, because we know that our alternative facilities plan is helping us get up to date with some of that backlog of maintenance, we know that we have a lot more maintenance needs as well. We have some additional discussions that we're going to be continuing, that we need to dig a little bit deeper on, around wellness, maybe a wellness center, athletic spaces. We're looking at potential adult learning spaces, community ed spaces, training spaces, a continued conversation that we are having with the city as far as an alternative transportation department site. And then we've also been exploring, as actually it came up through the task force itself, they said, have we looked at private fundraising for any of this sort of things? And so we've been exploring that a little bit, but that was an interesting topic that kind of came up from them, so we want to be honoring their work with that. So just sort of next steps on this is that they conclude their work on September 30th. We will then compile a report to present to the board for acceptance on the 6th. We'll then be using that information after discussion with the board to sort of develop some potential recommendations for a possible referendum in 2015. We would be looking at some sort of a public forum to sort of talk about what that recommendation might be sometime after that meeting on October 20th, and a tentative board decision on November 17th. And just a reminder for the public, that all of the facilities task force meetings are open to the public. We've been trying to do a lot of sharing with the community in our weekly e-newsletters, on social media, and some updates to in our weekly media alerts as well, as just what the progress is, because we really do want this to be open and transparent, and then we are archiving all the meeting materials on our website, so edineschools.org/fatf will get you right to the facilities task force page with all the materials there. So, any questions?
I just want to thank you, Susan, and the members of the committee for the hard work that you're doing. The meetings have been informative for me, just exciting to hear about some of the options that are being considered and the priority weight being placed on the items. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been fun to watch them at work, and I look forward to seeing where it all comes out. Thank you for your work, Susan.
Yeah, it has, I mean, there's a lot of different opinions, and that's what we wanted, you know, so it's good for them to work together and for us to observe that and hear that, and hopefully get them to move to some consensus.
Thank you. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Can I add a motion in a second to bring that to the floor, please?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Rick, you want to walk us through, please?
I certainly will. We have our personnel recommendations. It's fall, so our personnel hiring process is slowed a little bit, but we do have some action items there to take, our expenditures for September. We have some fund transfers. Again, these are all typical things that we do in the fall of the year to write our funding. We have a few minor adjustments in the board agenda, as I mentioned. Nursing care contracts, these annually have been supported by the administration for approval. We felt it's important to take board action, and so we've added this. Again, the administration is supportive of these, these are all services that are companies that we've used in the past, we just want to formalize it through the board process. We have some field trips that are occurring or have occurred. Remember, there are times when, due to the timeliness of the trip, that sometimes a superintendent by policy is allowed to sign off on some of these reports. We have a variety of gifts from our very generous community, and that would conclude the consent agenda items.
On the Valley View Orchestra, there's just a date, the middle date is incorrect, unless we're doing some time travel on that trip.
It goes from the 24th to the 27th.
Just a minor typo. Any other consent item comments, or anything you'd like removed from the consent agenda?
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
When you do requests for leave of absence without pay for an entire school year, and I know that those are, have been approved by Dr. Dresden, when they come back to the district, then does that displace another teacher, or how does that work?
I'll refer this to Dr. Jackson of HR.
It possibly displaces another teacher, because we will then hire a one-year, long-term substitute for the person, usually.
It's typically done with a long-term substitute.
Yes, with a one-year contract.
Thank you, Gwen.
And we've discussed this in the past, but what's the cycle as far as how long will we knew that? Have we standardized that now, or is it still on a case-by-case basis? Because we had some concerns about too many of them coming back at one point and not having spots for them all.
Yes, it depends on the type of leave. So there are some that are mobility leaves, and they can last up to five years at the discretion of the teacher. And then there are others who we have been going on a year-by-year basis, and we have been limiting them, so that we don't have a large group coming back at one time, for example.
Okay, excellent. And mobility, you said, was at the discretion of the teacher or the superintendent?
The mobility is up to the teacher. Once the, once the leave is approved, they can have a mobility leave up to five years.
Okay. Thank you.
What does mobility find out?
Mobility means, for example, we have some teachers who are now in Vietnam, we have some teachers who have gone to Saudi Arabia, and they are teaching overseas. We have another teacher who just returned from China and India.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Gwen. Additional questions, comments? Are those in favor of approving the consent agenda as with one minor amendment? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our tax levy. Can I add a motion to bring the proposed 2014 levy that's payable in 2015 to the table?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. We did hear a presentation on this earlier this evening. Any discussion, question, comments?
It sounds like the Facilities Task Force has had a strong discussion on this.
Finance and.
Finance, Facilities Committee.
Yeah, hopefully, we didn't take it to the task force.
Sorry. I meant facilities, and all the apps, all those apps, the facilities and finance. Had a hearty discussion?
Yes, yes. And on all, on all matters, and trying to figure out, you know, was this amount, the right amount, you know, is it, is it the right decision, you know, looking at, from the taxpayer's perspective, from the district's perspective, being responsible with our funding. Yeah, I feel we had a rather hearty discussion. Would you agree?
Agree.
Okay. Additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the proposed tax levy for 2014 payable 2015? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our district committees, councils, and teams for 2014, 2015. There were some updates to this. Can I add a motion to bring it to the floor, please?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the district committees, council, and teams for 2014, 2015. This is always a work in process, but it appears that we've nailed down most of these. Any discussion?
I had some questions, actually.
Go ahead.
Okay. On the Chemical Health Advisory Team, do we typically not have a board member on that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, my next question was around the world's best workforce, just wondering how long the, because it looked like we had a current group of parent representatives on that, and, but I think previously it was a different version of a committee.
Yep.
And just wondering how long they have served, and if we have, you know, limits on that service.
So this would be my third year in Edina Public Schools, and these are members, for the most part, that were here when I started two years ago. So they've been on here for that amount of time, and it was the Student Achievement Committee in the past, so we've kind of morphed this committee now to be the World's Best Workforce Committee, and we'll be looking at expanding some membership down the road. I think three-year terms is what has been established in the past.
Okay, good.
Just as a comment, can we add that to this, so it's, so it's maybe a little clearer? Well, yeah, just what it is, so.
To all of them.
Yeah.
If it's convenient.
When their term is.
If it's convenient, so.
The next one was around the Student Support Services Committee. I understand that committee hasn't met a lot lately, and so I'm wondering if they're going to start meeting now with our new leadership.
Yep, so that would be confirming that. That was part of the strategic plan, so last spring, if you recall, strategic plan is presented with the revisions. Jeff Jorgensen, who's our Director of Student Support Services, has already have all that motion in place, and so we'll be having that and redesigning that function as it aligns to the services we provide.
Great. And then just one last question. I noticed on the Student Wellness Committee that Lori Post wasn't listed.
Lori had finished her term, and so Concord does have a new member. Lori's still very actively involved, but she did not reapply to be on the term and is working with the new, the new person, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I see on several of these, there's.